William will leave us an indication. We may stand in far place to the flag.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we bow once again before the throne of grace. We're thankful for all our blessings. We know that your watchful eye is focused directly upon the backdrop of the impoverish, the hunger, the age of the young, the careless, and the unconcerned. We have, at this moment in time, before us, the awesome responsibility of making certain that all citizens within the jurisdiction of this city are beneficiaries of all the services available. Make us, the mayor, council, staff, all employees, sensitive to our opportunities. We pray for our president, our nation stands in the need of your divine providence. Bid us acknowledge of thine awesomeness. And oh Lord, grant that our minds be illumined and our motives, intentions, resilience, decisions, and all our actions taken be equal to the task. It is in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to ask a city clerk who is dedicated to perfection to have a roll call for us.
Mayor Kay.
Here.
Mayor President Allen.
Here.
Councilmember Hen.
Here.
Councilmember Wal.
Here.
Councilmember Tack.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We're all here. Minutes of budget work session fifteenth May and budget work session minutes thirty May. Twelve.
Ladies and gentlemen. Second.
Motion number second. Any corrections, addition, comment? Here now, all in favor of the motion, ladies and gentlemen, raise an eye.
Aye.
All right, opposing? Minutes are approved. We have a couple of presentations, but before we do that, we do have the public comment period. Anyone who would like to take this opportunity to address us for up to three minutes, we'd be glad to hear from you. Anyone? If you would give us and the clerk your name and mailing address.
My name is Lenisha Caraway and my address is one oh nine Neal Street, Goldsboro.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Not very well. Is there?
Recording.
Oh, okay. So go ahead. Look.
My name is Lenisha Caraway and I'm a citizen of Goldsboro, North Carolina. I was born in Mount Olive and raised in Goldsboro. I've lived here for thirty-four years with the exception of my years attending and graduating from North Carolina A and T. I'm here today in the hopes of starting some dialogue concerning the seemingly never-ending violence that is occurring in our city so that we can hopefully begin to find ways to stop it and to also show that there are some concerned citizens who are outraged at all of the violence going on. I would like to pose the following questions on this evening. What kind of future can the younger generations look forward to if these types of things continue to happen? What business would want to move here if when they Google Goldsboro, North Carolina crime, they see a website that says Goldsboro is the eighty-first most dangerous city in the United States? It is pitiful that a city of this size with a population of less than forty thousand would have that distinction. In two thousand eleven, there were seven homicides the entire year. In two thousand twelve, there have already been five homicides, and they have all occurred within the last three months. All of these victims were under the age of forty. Additionally, there have been the countless shooting incidents where fortunately no one died despite them definitely trying to kill people. For example, there were four shootings in one week in May, and just this month, four people were shot in one night. I cannot understand why there hasn't been some type of public statement given by our city officials. On the front page of the Goldsboro News August last Thursday, an article's title was "Another Murder Logged in the City." In my opinion, right beside that article, or at least on the front page of Friday's paper, should have been an article titled "City Violence Will Not Be Tolerated," with reassurances that solutions were being implemented. Why wasn't it there? Is it because these crimes didn't happen in so-called nice neighborhoods or because none of the victims were upper class? I certainly hope not because the bottom line is this is not a race or a class issue. It is a city issue. What happens in one area affects us all. It may not have happened in your neighborhood or mine, but it may have happened on the street you drive down to go to work or near the restaurant your family visits. Who's to say where the next shooting may occur? In addition, incidents like these not only affect what businesses move here, but also the types of citizens we attract and the types that we lose to other places. So what can we do to get this turned around? Develop a task force? Institute a curfew? Start a parent mentoring program? Add more police presence? I don't know, and frankly, it's not my job to know. As I read on the, as I read on the city of Goldsboro website, the mayor and city council are elected officials who develop city policies for the city of Goldsboro. As a legislative body of the city, the city council adopts ordinances and resolutions and establishes policies, programs, and procedures necessary for governing Goldsboro. Well, as an active voter, I believe definitely we need those policies, programs, and procedures now. If we don't take immediate action, this city, this situation will only continue to get worse and the future of our city will suffer as a result. Again, my name is Lenisha Caraway and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, ma'am. I can assure you that this council is very, very much concerned. We just had a discussion about this very issue. And we will continue it. We will get your name and information and we will keep you informed.
Thank you.
Personally. Thank you. We're all very much concerned about this.
Mr. Mayor, let me come in.
Yes.
We have discussed it and appreciate your interest and your comments. And the way to get help is you get the rest of the people in this room to get behind you and help us and the police department. And if you will do that, we can run these people out of these neighborhoods. I, I agree with you totally, and the chief of police is ready and willing to do that. But he needs every one of us to cooperate with him. But thank you for your standing up and bringing this to us.
Ms. Caraway, I have a question. Do y'all have a crime watch group set up in, in that area over there? Or in that neighborhood?
I'm not sure if it's active. We did have a neighborhood watch program, but I'm not sure if it's active right now. I mean, we don't, we, luckily, we haven't had a big issue in my neighborhood.
Neighborhood watch is, in some areas, is working.
So, but I wasn't really, I mean, I'm concerned for the whole city. It's not necessarily just my neighborhood, but everybody. Because just because it's not happening at my house doesn't mean it's not happening. It doesn't affect me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
May I address the panel?
Yes, you may.
Jim Sanders.
No, sir. If you speak, you need to come forward and give us your name and mailing address.
Again, my name is Jim Sanders and I am addressing the situation that the lady just spoke about. Am I fortunate?
Would you, would you give us your mailing address, please? Name and mailing address.
Twenty-seven zero-six Langston Drive. Am I fortunate that I live on Langston Drive where this type of crime does not occur? I would have to say I, yes, definitely yes. But that does not mean that I am not concerned about the crime rate that is continuing to climb in our city. It's not only the minor crimes now, it's the major crimes that are being committed. Our citizens are being not just killed, they're being murdered. And the only thing that I can say is to just reiterate what the lady just said. And I thank you, and I know you're trying to do something about it, but maybe some way we can do something together to get more behind all of this.
We appreciate all of your concerns, and I, I would say to all of you now, we need all of the eyes and ears that we have in the city of Goldsboro. If you see something, say something. We've got bad people out there, and there are people out there who know these bad people, and they won't say one word to let us know where they are, who they are. If you see somebody doing something wrong, let a responsible person know. Just don't watch it. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Yes, sir.
How you doing? My name's Jamal Alabas and I stay at sixteen-twenty Boyer Drive, and I kind of want to, um...
Pardon me. Did you, did you get that? Sometimes it's a little fast and she can't get it. Go ahead.
And I'm basically hitting probably some of the same subjects you just heard about the issues that we got in our community. And you're right, some people do need to start standing, standing up and, um, stop acting like when it's your people that's doing this stuff that, uh, it's okay. But when it's somebody you know that it's happening to, it's rest in peace and we feel bad and it's sorry. I mean, the thing is, you need to touch these people. If you know this guy's out here, he robbing, he shooting, he doing this and that, say something to him then. Because then I hate to see when the same person is doing this stuff, it happened at him, not everybody say it and feel sorry. But you never spoke up in the beginning to try to stop the problem. Like, when we talked about coming to this meeting tonight, like I was telling my, my friend, a lot of people like, well, what is the meeting gonna do? What is it gonna help? They gonna still do it? But yet, when stuff happened, you say it. You ain't tried to do nothing. That's the point of us coming together because we know everything can't stand on y'all. We, as a community, have to stand up and try to do something. I mean, it's like this right here. I got three sons in this community. I grew up here all my life, and I don't want to see nobody that I know kid hurt my kid or mine hurt theirs. And if he do, he going to jail. I'm not putting the house up. He going to jail. He gonna have to face his responsibility of what he did. But we take and we go and we, oh baby, it's all right, you wrong, this and that. We go get a T-shirt that say "Free to Kill." When is that cool? That's not cool. You know, we got to stand up now and stop talking about what we gonna do and start doing something. You know, and, um, as of now, I'm trying to organize a, we all, we got Stop the Violence Movement, and I'm trying to see how to make that pick off. And like I said, it hurts me to be in here right now. I'm in pain right now and had to walk about a half a block, but I had to be here. You know what I'm saying? When I got to them steps, you don't know how I felt, that it was upstairs and not downstairs. But I had to be here, you know, because if I get on Facebook like so many other people and talk about this problem all day and never take initiative to do something, what's gonna happen? It's only gonna get worse. And we say we want to stop the funerals. How are we gonna stop the funerals if we don't do nothing? A lot of us parents, okay, I hate for my kids right now to leave the neighborhood, leave the house, not because I'm scared of something going to happen to them, because I want to keep that control over them. I don't want to say, okay, what are you doing when you down the street with such and such? Are you into something that you ain't got no business doing? At thirteen, you shouldn't be running all over the neighborhood like you ain't got no home training. I'm proud to say my son still play with toys and they still children. Because nowadays at thirteen, they're getting high and drinking and cussing their elders out. That's not gonna happen with mine. Us as parents, we need to stand up and take some responsibility because all they doing is what we allow them to do. I mean, I wish somebody would come home and say, little Pappy said this to me, disrespectful. See, I'm gonna get on him. The Xbox he got, I'm gonna get on him. Might catch a charge. But I'm gonna get on him because he's my child. And I don't want to seem like, okay, I didn't work all these years and try to keep you from having it. Nothing wrong with people staying in projects. But to keep you away from that, to keep you from the bad environment that that can bring for you to act like that. And like I said, us as parents and us as a community, we gonna have to stand up. Stop feeling sorry every time something happen. Feel sorry before it happened and try to take initiative to stop it from happening. That's basically what I got to say.
Appreciate your comments, sir.
Hey Jamal. Where you leave?
Yeah.
Use the elevator.
There's an elevator. There's an elevator. That'll take away some of the pain, hopefully.
Good evening. My name is Margita Wilson. M-A-R-G-I-T-A. Three oh four A Oleander Avenue.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I just want to reiterate, um, some of the things that were already spoken about. I do have some ideas, like Ms. Caraway said about the, uh, curfew. If you're under the age eighteen, what business do you have out after twelve o'clock a curfew? I think will help alleviate some of the, um, crime that's going on at certain times of the night. Um, I was speaking with my sister, she lives in Greensboro, and she said that, um, the police department there started a program where they had foot patrol in high-crime areas such as the housing projects. They had posts that were designated specifically for those areas where the police had continuous patrol. It bothers me every time I drive down Slocombe Street and I get to the corner of Slocombe and, and Elm Street and there's people posted up on the side of the street. What, what is your purpose for standing there? If, if I ride by, go to my mom's house and I come back an hour later and the same people are still standing there, what purpose are you serving for being there? And it shouldn't be. I agree, sometimes I don't, I don't want to let my kids leave out the house. My son just got a new bicycle and he's, he's a freshman at Wayne School of Engineering this year. And I could send him to football practice and so on and so forth on his bike, but I don't want to. I, 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 I just don't want to. I have that fear in my heart that I don't, I don't want to, to, I want to keep control of things that I feel like I cannot control right now in my city. Um, is there a way that we can start a liaison between the citizens and the police department? Some type of group that we can, we can start working together to do something? And, um, another idea that I had was a gun buyback program. Is there any way that we can start a program where we could encourage people to, some type of initiative to turn in guns to, um, I don't know if it'd be a financial thing or some type of bonus or some type of incentive to get people to, to turn in guns to get the guns off our streets? And those were just some of my ideas.
We appreciate your ideas, ma'am. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Dana Taylor and I live on Slocombe Street, right across from Manhattan. Um, I'm a transplant, but I've been here for over twenty-two years. And I'm sad to say that today I have become numb when it comes to hearing of the death of new youth in the community. It's become so common that we don't cry anymore. And that's sad. I think that some of the solutions would be that parents have to be held accountable. And when I say parents have to be held accountable, not to, you know, throw scripture at anyone, but you raise a child in the way he should grow, and when he gets older, he won't depart from it. When you see that you have a child that you have lost control over, you have to be encouraged in our community to call the police. Get a PINS petition and utilize some of the resources. When you don't have a communication with the police department or you look at the police like they're, you're an enemy, you don't utilize those things and so these children run havoc on our citizens. Those parents put them out and they turn on us in the community. I'm sad to say that my son, who's a law-abiding, tax-paying citizen who works in one of those communities, was assaulted, jumped by four individuals. He knew them. He had recently come to me and asked me to help some of them that had former offenses to beget employment. He informed the police department, he knew who they were, and to my information, those individuals are back on the street in the same community from which they offended. I can't understand why the police department did not enforce a greater bond or bail, whatever. These children have done this before. This gang violence is nothing new. They come in groups and they get whatever they came for. They rob people in their homes. Um, I just recently heard of a man who works in the store across the street being murdered by a sixteen-year-old. A sixteen-year-old? Where was his mother and father? Where was the neighbors to say, that's not the way to go, son? Where was the programs? The summer jobs? Each and every one of us have to be held accountable because we failed. And every day, we're hearing new horror stories of these children who are running wild in our communities and wreaking havoc. I agree with some of the things that were said by those who came before about curfews. They have no business out there on the streets unless they're gainfully employed. And it's not limited to African-Americans in our community. I see the white boys come in there too, and I guess their business is illegal. Because at that time of night, nothing is happening on the street but drugs. Why aren't they stopped? And when I speak of accountability, for those parents who call the police and say, I cannot handle my son, help me, and the system fails, they should not be held accountable. But my little understanding of the law, if your child doesn't go to school and they're truant, the parent is held accountable. If your children are not taken care of when it comes to health, they don't get their vaccinations or proper dentistry, social service will intervene and bring up charges of neglect or abuse. But when it comes to criminal violence where these children are wreaking havoc on other citizens, there's no laws in place to hold their parents accountable? Am I missing something? Each and every one of us in this room knows someone who's either been a victim or who's committed a violent crime. We have nothing to deter this behavior. We turn a blind eye, we hear about it, but we don't do anything about it. I personally think it's wrong. We all need to be held accountable. I don't know if it's gotta be by way of an incentive like a Crime Stoppers program or a deterrent by telling these parents, if you don't get your children in line, we're gonna lock you up. Give them a fine if you find them on the street violating the, um, curfew, but we've got to do something. I think we need to be proactive before we wind up going to the funeral parlor to bury another youth. Thank you.
Ms. Taylor.
Thank you, ma'am.
I, I just wanted to share with you, um, there's a neighborhood watch right across, um, the captain lives right across from me on Slocombe Street. They, um, formed a neighborhood watch group, and whenever they call and they've made calls to the police and within ten, ten, twelve minutes, the police is there. And this, this, this went on, when they first organized, I guess maybe probably about three months ago they organized. And really, it has an impact on this crime and, and it's, it's getting better, you know? Things are getting better.
Where on Slocombe?
Well, it's in the, um, fourteen-hundred block, fourteen oh six block.
Okay, I, I know I hadn't heard anything about it, and maybe it's working down there?
It'll, it'll, I think it'll work anywhere if you organize it like they've organized it. I went to a couple of their meetings, they meet once a month. And, um, they're, they're doing, I mean, they're really watching and they're, I know they're keeping the police department busy, and things are getting better. Probably making less calls, man.
Well, um, I can't speak to what I don't know about.
Once the criminal finds out that the police will become involved, sometimes they'll say, well, we better stay away from that area. Thank you.
Like I said, I don't know about that, but I would like to get more information about it because the fourteen-hundred block really isn't receiving that much in terms of problems, but like we have Manhattan's and, um, Lincoln Homes, there's always something going on there. There's always something going on there. Thank you. I think, uh, ma'am...
Yeah, I think one, one more thing to what you said, Ms. Hur, because I know, I, I mean, I've had a lot of conversation with the police chief over the last few months about this. But one of the other problems that needs to be addressed, and it's gonna be a lot better if it's addressed by people in the community, that's why I bring this up, is all the police can do is arrest them and charge them. Once they get to the court system, we don't have any say-so, because I'm like, why is this person out again? Why is this person out again? And, and so the other side of this whole coin is, you know, if they're gonna go to the courts and the jail, just, and, and they just let them rock back out, then the police are arresting the same people, the same people, and the same people. And so there's an issue there too. And I don't know what the answer is, I, I wish I did, but it's a, it's a two-sided approach. A lot of times, the chief's in here, I think he'll tell you, we're dealing with the same people many times over, and, and that's one of the problems too. And, and ultimately, I guess they do enough wrong that they can lock them up long enough to get them off the street. But, but it's a, it's a, the system is a tough system.
I, I, I don't want to debate that with you, but I, you know, I'm mindful that color matters much. And I say that because if some of these crimes were committed against those who were not of color, I think that we would see a more visible and active police presence. I don't think that they would be getting slapped on the wrist if per se it was your son.
I don't agree with you at all.
I think that it would be different if your son, Bob, was working in one of these developments and, and was accosted by four that beat him. I think that those children would be getting, uh, larger bail. I, I, I really do believe that in my heart. And so I'm, I'm saying that it does matter as to where these, these crimes and these behaviors do take place. It, it's a known fact.
Well, I'm not gonna, I don't, I don't agree with you, but I'm not gonna bait you.
I'm understood.
But I, I, Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that, that the chief get these names and maybe all of them meet together and do that.
I'm gonna go on better than that.
All right.
I'm gonna get these names. And every person who speak here tonight, I'm gonna meet with you as a group. And we're gonna talk. And we'll do that as soon as we can arrange it. She's got the names and I'm very much concerned about this. As am I. And I'm sure all of our citizens are. Well, when it happens to your child? I know, I... It does change things. Absolutely agree with you. You know, I thank God that there were no guns and knives involved, but it doesn't change the fact that these behaviors are taking place and that the individuals that were taken into custody was released. They're still on the street. That shouldn't be the case.
You're right.
We will fully discuss all of the issues you mentioned and some of the preventive actions you talked about. I appreciate that. Whatever we can do to prevent this, or slow it, we're not gonna stop it, but to get it manageable, we'll do it. We'll do it.
Thank you, ma'am.
But we do need the help of our community. Absolutely. Because there are a lot of people out there who see these thugs. Like I said, it starts at home with their parents. Their parents are even afraid of them. But they are thugs. Absolutely. And we need to recognize them as thugs and report them and get them off the street. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm not here to place the blame on everybody that holds power because regardless of the fact, you guys hold more power than a community as itself. There's a rules and regulations based on the constitution that you guys took oath to to take care of, whether it's black, Hispanic, white, the police department, the mayor as itself, you deal with budgets, you deal with things that can go into certain programs, certain different things, just to reiterate on a lot of things that we have spoke about. And as for me, my mother, her name is Suzette Best, she lives in a housing authority. But yet, when you have violence from gunshots or whatever it is, you get the police, you call the police, yet it takes them forty minutes to come to these projects versus to other neighborhoods, and they's right there on Walnut Street, Slocombe Street, right down the road. And my argument is that, what is my call for my mom? And she needs, you know, she needs somebody to come then. The ambulance won't come until the police department get here. When does their, why do they even take into effect? You get what I'm saying? Why does people say, well, the police department has, they have to be protected? You get what I'm saying? Why does people say, well, the police department has, they have to be protected? Well, first of all, my mother is a citizen. Regardless if she stay next to a thug, they still someone that can be saved. And I understand it comes with parents, and I understand it comes with the community, and I understand that it comes with teaching. But yet, we are all somebody. You made mistakes in your life, regardless of your race. Okay, fine, we understand that it's a difference issue between blacks and whites. That's been going on for years. I may be the next, um, Mahalia Jackson, or I may be the next voice of the Cicely Tyson. But I'm here right now because this is my people. Y'all don't understand that, yet it's gang violence, but yet where's the mentor programs? Why do they take all these programs away for these black people, these white people, or these Hispanic people? Why aren't they doing more in the community? Where is the money going? Where is the budgets going? We need to understand, you building a, a, a road out there, but yet I don't see anything for these little young kids to go play in the safe park. You get what I'm saying? And I'm not, like I said, I'm not trying to just pinpoint anybody out. I'm just trying to get some answers here. I'm just trying to get answers of safety. I wanna be safe when I walk to my mom's house. A lot of these people are dying senseless. They got guns that can shoot your, your check, your heart through your back. Do you not understand? So can y'all relate? You gotta be a person that can, that's a diverse person that can relate to all mankind. I don't care if you got a master's degree, I have a master's degree. But yet, if I was to go out there in them streets and talk to them young men, they can understand me, because I been through the same fight they been through. I'm not blaming anybody in particular, but yet it needs to be a code. Do y'all have knowledge of what these gangs, who mentoring these gangs? What are your education producing? You understand what I'm saying? You sit in your suits, but yet you can judge me, because I look like I'm not educated. Those men, those black men that are dying are just as smart as somebody that got a PhD, but without guidance. You understand? So when we all come together and communicate like we doing now, it's, I mean, it works better. But my argument, you gotta, you follow the constitution on certain laws, but reiterate and don't enforce them. Y'all say, well, this is what the constitution states, or a grade charge, aid in the ju- drug charges, or discharge. But yet, when you have these people out here, like she said, with the infrared guns and doing all these things, they got back on the streets killing senseless. They didn't let, killed this boy for nothing. He's a working man, because he stayed in the same projects that they stayed in. But yet, when they start going to these other communities, after they realize that they ain't got no money in hours, we gonna see what's to be done. Because what they gonna end up doing, said, okay then, I'm going to jail for twenty years for, for shooting somebody that stay next door to me. But yet, the marches isn't working anymore. This is the two thousand and twelve. Them marches that happened with Martin Luther King not working with this generation. Those things that happened back then don't work with that no more. We need to get involved, like, understand it. Step out of your comfort zone and step in ours. Get, I mean, really, like I said, on my head, place blame, we all pray, we all do this together. But ask all the, all of us into making the right choices together, because we all are mankind. We're not black, white, Asian. God don't see that. He see people. And I'm coming because I love everybody. I don't care if the person, yeah, there's some people do get where they discouraged, some people are thugs. But yet, those thugs can be saved. Judge O'Brien or whoever he was, he was just as wicked as the one, and now he got a TV show. So all I'm saying is time to think about saving lives, instead of always judging and pointing the finger about our kids. I don't care, when I see a white person, I see them when they in the projects with a little black person. So we don't see that in a community. The community can't help, because it's predominantly more white or more black. They all coming together now, because they all love them out there. Like she said, if you go to the projects, you got just as much Hispanic, whites, Asians, and blacks together grooming together, and they doing everything in the world. So now it's just time for everybody to step out in ties, step out all that, and come out there where we at, and see what's really going on. Because I'm telling you, my mom out there and I'm keeping ties on everything that's going on. And if I call the police or nine one one and they come at a certain time and something don't happen, I'm keeping a job on everything. I don't play that. And I have a master's degree, but yeah, I'm not gonna change in front. I'm gonna do what's right and stand for what's right. And when I face God, I'd rather for him to say, well done, instead of say, well, why didn't you do this? You get what I'm saying? Because you don't wanna feel, you wanna side with this person because it's your job. Sometimes with changes comes serious consequences. And when you doing what's right, it's always somebody that's gonna go against you. So we are here to do what's right. And if you with me, I'm with you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Best, I suggest you call our sister city manager and let her update you on some things, and she'll tell you about the rec, parks and rec and Scott Bonard and all the programs they got going, and how do we, we're doing, we're renovating the parks, we're doing a lot of things in the parks.
And I have called, I called, talking to my pastor Smith, and he, and he prayed with me, he said, and the mayor, and Reverend Barbara has these, I think it's a program, and I committed him on that.
We're going way beyond.
Right. Well, what my problem is, this, I know it's only three minutes, is still, you guys hold a different power than we do. We only can do so much. The constitution, based on your constitution and your laws and your procedures. My argument is this, regardless of what's going on or the budget, sometimes you gotta subtract what, what's really worked. The balance is that, because boredom plays a lot in what's going on in the community, because your children don't got nowhere to go.
But still, call, check with them, let them give you some statistics on what's going on, okay? Just check with them, okay?
Is there anyone else?
How you doing? Hey, Mr. Riley, graduate with Wes. How you doing, Mr. Heaton?
Um, I wanna just, uh, talk about what I think is going on. It seems like the crime is contained in one area. And as long as it's contained in that area against a certain kind of people, that there's nothing to be done. And Mr. Williams, I went to school with Charles, your son, know him very well. I also have a son, uh, that's sixteen years old, um, comes from a single parent home. Uh, and I've done everything I could to steer him right. But the lure of the streets and, uh, this thug life that you're talking about took a hold of him. You know, I'm educated, sent him to the best schools and all of that. And sometimes you still end up on the losing stick of things. But I'm, I'm giving him completely tough love. He's over there right now. Not gonna be bonded out, that's where he's gonna be until we figure out, or he gets tired. He's gonna get tired before I do. So when I talk to you, I'm talking to you from experience, and Mr. Heaton knows, because he's worked with my son. I've done all the programs, and I work in the mental health field, and I work with the Parks and Recreation. You know, so I'm not talking, coming out of a, you know, out of nowhere, when I speak to you, I'm leaving one meeting, coming here. I volunteer, I work with the mayor's council of disabilities, all of that thing, all of those things. And I advocate to the unctuous power for kids with special needs. And my son also, but it's, it's, advocating now is over for him, it's about getting him on the right path. And we are coming to you to work with you, Mr. Williams. And I see you kinda throwing some things back about trying this and trying that, and we're willing to do that, but we wanna work with you. We wanna create some kind of dialogue tonight that will lead to something further. So saying, go check the Parks and Recreation, I'm at the W A Foster Center all the time. You know, and they've closed down a center that we had here that my son played basketball at and took swimming lessons at. Many of those kids in that area don't have a ride to the Y. They don't have programs that are coming from the Y to pick those children up to bring them to the Y. You know, and so, and we do have Menewell Pool and all of that, but when I grew up, and a lot of people in here can attest to it, we went to the South Building, which had an art program. We went to the North Building for Play Day, and East End School, uh, fed us. You know, so we had those things in place in the summertime, and our parents didn't have to worry. I think, uh, Wes went to school with me right over there at East End. That's the, that's the era I came in of diversity. Then you gotta look at what's going on at the one school that's in this area. You know, they, they passed this no child left behind law, and we leaving more children behind than ever. You know, let's look at the whole picture. You know, so you got parents, and I don't blame parents for sending their kids to other schools, because you gotta do what you gotta do. But I wish our parents would fight for what was right for Goldsboro High School. And we can have that diversity, because if we had that diversity in our neighborhoods. Then you gotta go back to the vocational courses that they have at that school. Now, if you're not prepared to go to college, you kinda lost at Goldsboro High School, because it's not one vocational class there. Not one. And the one teacher we had left, and they moved him to Southern Lane. So when we have these discussions, let's have it on a broad well realm. Let's have the Parks and Recreation to participate. Let's get the superintendent involved, and let's really get down to business about what's really going on. Because we, we can't say to parents, but now you got parents who are young, I mean, very young. And then it's a generational thing. So what are we gonna do about it? Are we gonna keep pointing the fingers at those parents, or are we gonna come up with some solutions? Are we gonna work together? Because what we are planning on doing when we leave here is we're gonna start meeting. And we're gonna start a petition. And the only people we want to sign that petition are registered voters. So we gonna start holding people accountable. And I'm serious about that. And I'm one that has a child on the other side, but right is right and wrong is wrong, and he'll tell you that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm now a resident in Raleigh, North Carolina, but, um, I was born and raised in Goldsboro. And I have concerns, I come to church, I go to church here on Sundays. But I also have kids who also come to Goldsboro. And, um, the thing that I have, the problem that I have with it is, like they said before, um, what time they need to be in the house, a certain time that, you know, if the teenager's out at a certain time, you know, so I'll care for you. You know what I'm saying? Them being in the house, because not even a month ago, my son was in Goldsboro. And we're now residing in Raleigh, but we was in Goldsboro. And, um, he was out one night, I didn't know he was out. And he was in a part with another, uh, another child fighting. And guns was involved. One of his friends had a gun, and the, his, the friend that he was fighting had a gun. And it was just them four out there, and not, you know, if anybody would've got killed, nobody would've never known about it. And if you go to the police department with, some stuff you go to the police department with, they don't, they really, they really do not care. Because you can voice your opinion, and it's just like cer- certain people, they, they'll say that, well, it's another black killing another black. It's not fair, it's not right. It is, because this is, this is what's going on. Every, a lot of these kids, they grew up together, and if you voice your opinion, you worry about your concern, even if, I mean, if, if I was, I had a problem with the, the, the services with child support. A worker told another, told, you know, so another party that something I said, and this man could've killed me on the streets. You know what I'm saying? Which, that was going against violation, because I really didn't say it. But I could've killed, that, somebody could've killed me. You know what I'm saying? You, that nobody's concerned about each other's, you know what I'm saying, well-being. It's just not the streets, it's, it's, when you call for help, you're not getting the help that you need. You're not getting the help that you need. I mean, these kids, it's like, my son just got back from California this morning. He said, Mom, I wanna go to Goldsboro. I'm scared for him to come to Goldsboro, and this is where he was, he was born and raised. But if he come, if, if, if I leave him for a weekend, I don't know if I'm gonna have my child back safe or not. Because he can be walking up the street, and somebody can just shoot him. Anything. You know, so I'm, I'm just saying that, as far as the curfew for these kids, if they see kids out and about, like, ask to see their ID. You know what I'm saying? It can be, you know, they should be made, they have some kind of ID, school ID, ask to see their ID. You know what I'm saying? I mean, so they can be, you know, some, sometimes the, the same very troubled kids, if they wanna hang out late at night, sometimes they have to be taught a lesson, you know, saying, let them be locked up for a certain amount of days, you know what I'm saying? The teacher, this is what you got to do, we got to, you know, keep this, this street safe. And that's basically my concerns. I mean, and then as far as the clubs, fifteen and sixteen year olds hanging in the clubs where they don't belong, and they drink. And this is where the other gun violence story also. Because they have no business being there, they're not, they're underage. Fifteen, sixteen, hey, some fourteen, I have, when I see a club, I have seen them in there. And sometimes I have left the club, because I'm like, I'm not partying, partying with nobody else's child. So that, in a, a lot of times, this will fight in the shooting store. So I, I think that far as the clubs, you know what I'm saying? Like, the police are scared to go out to the clubs when things happen or whatever. I think that it should be more police involved, instead of, you know, somebody, you called him and you said him, what's what? And, you know, so they just brush it off and just say, oh, that's another black person. That's, that's not fair. This, my concerns that I have.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. What I have to say is.
Would you give her your name and mailing address?
Eighty twenty eight, something. What I have to say is it's gonna take less than three minutes. Um, I was at the emergency room the other night when they brought those teenagers in. And it hurt me because, um, we was on lockdown, because they wouldn't let us leave. And a little boy, I guess his friend brought him in, they pushed him in a wheelchair. They pushed him in the hallway and said, he said he got shot in the stomach, and left from there and walked off. So we, you know, we were saying things like, I mean, why they just gonna leave him there? The doctor went in, this lady was hollering, my acid reflux bothering me, my acid reflux bothering me, this child still sitting here with a gunshot wound to his stomach. So the doctor goes to see what's going on, the lady hollering, she's saying what's wrong with her, her acid reflux bothering her. So my friend and I, we were arguing about it. So the nurse said, why they keep shooting each other? But that's, yeah, that's right, they're not, they shouldn't be shooting each other, but why you gonna leave this child, twenty years old, sitting in this hallway? And then they finally pushed him in. You know, he had to have surgery, but look how long it took them to push him in. And they got upset with us, because we were voicing our concerns, and they were saying, why they shooting each other? We don't know why they, well, I guess we can't figure out why they shooting each other. But the point is, what if he would've died right there in that hallway, in that wheelchair, sitting there holding his stomach? So that's all I have to say, I mean, that just had, it even.
Did you report this to the hospital authority?
I said we were gonna, I was gonna go online, because you know, they usually give you a survey. And my friend that was in the hospital at the time, we, when we voiced our concerns about it, they called the doctor, they said, Doc, we need your room seven, because that's where the child went in. He said, I'm coming. It took him about, what, three minutes to walk down there? You know, after he finished checking the lady out with acid reflux.
Did you ever consider reporting this to the hospital?
We, um, honestly, we didn't report it to the hospital manager.
You have?
No, we didn't. No, we didn't report it, because of past experience that I had, and I don't want to, you know, bring it up. But yes, we didn't report it. But we did say we was gonna go online and see if it was a survey online, because you do get things in the mail. We haven't got the survey in the mail yet. Once you go to the mercy room, you get a survey. Haven't gotten it in the mail yet, and that we wasn't completing the survey, and, you know.
Well, she's got your name, and I'm gonna talk to you again, and somebody's gonna talk to the hospital's management about this.
I appreciate that, and I have three other witnesses that was there. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Thank all of you for your concerns. This council is very much concerned. And I wish we had the answer. But it's a very, very difficult problem, and it's going to take every one of us to join forces to make a difference. It is the police department, they are doing a big job, they gotta do more, but there are limitations as to what. I won't go into that now, because we can't, we're not gonna solve it here. But I do wanna talk to those of you who came and, uh, have a, have a more in-depth discussion and see what we can do. Thank you. Now, we have a whole, uh, well, pleasing information. We have some presentation, and we have, uh, my friend, Mark Sutherland here. Mark, would you come forward and wanna talk to us a few minutes?
Actually, if you don't mind, I'm gonna introduce Mark.
Okay, well, you have, showing my, my, my other friend.
Good evening. Um, I'm here to introduce Mark Sutherland. Um, he's gonna give you a presentation on Envision East 2050, which is a very important event coming up in October of this year. Um, and he's gonna give you a brief presentation on that, and the reason- And the reason we're doing this, we're, we're speaking here at city council, the county commissioner meetings, we've been to some Rotary and Kiwanis and some civic clubs. Is because this event's gonna require citizen participation. So, we wanna get the word out about what it is and educate the public and officials like yourself so that we can get good participation from the citizens of Wayne County. So, let me tell you real quick a little about Mark. Mark is the vice president of North Carolina's Eastern Region and he has been since two thousand nine. His primary tasks include leading the Military Growth Task Force, the Defense Logistics Initiative, the Centennial Landscapes Program and, as you're here tonight, the Planet East Comprehensive Regional Planning Forum. Uh, concurrent with his business career, Mr. Sutherland's military career spanned thirty-two, thirty-two years of both active and reserve service in the US Marine Corps. He retired as a colonel in two thousand nine. He holds a BS degree in government from Florida State University and an MS degree in Strategic Studies from the US Army War College in Carlisle, Pennsylvania. So, um, with that, I will welcome Mark Sutherland.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's great to be back, you need my address? She knows how to find me. It's good to be back with you again and I, I appreciate the time and I won't take but a couple of minutes uh, because Chuck told me there's a trap door here and uh, not sure who holds the button, but I'm on. Am I, is this me? Okay. Uh, Planet East, you've heard, we talked to, I think, all of you about Planet East before. I really wanna thank the city council for allowing Tasha Logan to take time off to participate with that organization, it's vastly important uh, to us that she'd be there, Joanna Helms, Commissioner Keen.
We, we allowed her to do it, but so she could keep you guys straight, we need to make sure.
I told you.
Impossible.
Very important, she, she brings the maturity to it.
Yeah, that's why we-
As you know. This is an event that I'd just like for you to save the date, October twenty-fourth. It's an all-day thing and uh, to the extent you can participate, I don't think you're gonna wanna miss it. This is the last function of the Military Growth Task Force. It represents the transition of all that we've been doing to Planet East. But it's not a planning exercise by any means, it's an envisioning exercise. It's a look at our region and a couple of generations, based on some very specific stimuli. I've got a boogie chuck, I'm stepping right over here. Thing opens. Uh, this is what it's based on, what it's based on is it's three different population forecasts. The lower one, the bottom side, uh, is, is the state demographer's numbers. It looks to the past, sees a one percent growth rate, extends it to the right out into the future and says, that's what you have had in the past. So, that's what you're gonna have in the year twenty thirty and then twenty fifty, it's just kind of a straight line. We've studied now for going on three years, regions that used to look like ours but don't anymore. And we believe firmly that the, that that model needs to be visited with the state demographer based on the completion of Super Seventy, Super Seventeen and the eleven, two forty-one corridor, all by twenty thirty. All the other regions in the country we studied took a one percent growth rate. And at that moment, when that major road project was done, whether it's causal or coincidental, but it just happened to happen and every time their growth rate quadrupled. And it caught them quite off guard in a lot of ways. So, uh, back to this slide, what that means is our nine-county Planet East region absorbs population that's equivalent to Charlotte today on the high end. And on the low end, where the demographer's forecast is, you absorb a Raleigh. Either way, it's a, it's a lot of folks coming, okay? Now, this, this Envision East exercise is just to talk about as a community, where these folks are gonna live, where they're gonna work and how they're gonna get around. How's it gonna affect agribusiness, our military installations, uh, infrastructure, schools, housing and fiscal sustainability of our local governments? All those areas and all the study, uh, regional studies we did, as, as you and I've discussed, uh, had very negative and quite surprising impacts that took them a generation to get over. Okay? ULI, Urban Land Institute sponsors a Reality Check series. They've been doing this since two thousand five. They know what they're doing, very professionally run. Uh, the first one was in Los Angeles, the last one was last month in Hampton Roads. We, I think, are number twelve, we're number twelve, we're the twelfth Reality Check. But the first one, and Envision East 2050 is a Reality Check exercise sanctioned by Urban Land Institute. But ours will be the first one in the history of the program that's been done in a rural setting. A setting that actually has a chance to get ahead of the discussion of the envisioning and the planning. So, you don't get caught off guard, so you don't have all those negative, at least not all of them, you deal with some of them. Uh, most of the other places that have done them, uh, were, were, were massive, very highly populated urban centers that had, has some really severe sustainability, quality of life issues. Here they are. This is what it looks like, we'll have three hundred people in attendance, they will be divided into thirty tables, ten people at each table. There'll be an even mix of private sector, uh, leaders, public sector leaders and nonprofits. One-third, one-third, one-third split. The people at the table, you may or may not know, but they will represent the collective face of Eastern North Carolina. Uh, you see that they're using Legos. Legos are as good as anything, but the idea is that that map is eight feet by eight feet of Eastern North Carolina divided into one square mile cubes. And so, each of those yellow Legos is gonna represent nineteen hundred people, where you want them to live. Starts to be a big deal when you have a million more people coming. You know, you got five hundred of these things to put out there.
Deal, that's a pretty big deal.
The, the red ones are jobs, each of them is fifteen hundred new jobs, they have to be located somewhere. And how the people get from where they live to where they work is represented by pieces of yarn, it's that simple. And it starts to look like this, this is one that was recently held in Tampa Bay. And they had about a million people forecast to grow there and so it's not just the urban area of Hillsborough County, it's also the rural counties around it, eight counties total participate. And although we're thirty tables, there were about six different scenarios that emerged. Some of them urban centers, some of them sprawled out in the countryside with new Beltway construction. And uh, here's another one in Jacksonville, Florida, really four patterns emerged and you can see, one is a the one in the bottom left, that urban compact pattern meant to say, we was sticking the urban center, we want a vibrant urban center. We don't really wanna push over all the forestry and all the farms and sprawl population out there. But some of them did, the dispersed pattern in the top right actually is a continuation of the growth trajectory they're on. Don't know how that's gonna turn out for Eastern North Carolina, that's the purpose of the exercise, for the participants to come to terms with that. Not as a planning exercise, but just the reality of what a million more people means, four hundred thousand new jobs means in, in, in terms of all these things we can measure. That afternoon, after the program ends, the crunch bunch is doing their analysis while the participants are eating barbecue and they come back in and the crunch bunch delivers some analysis. You see four patterns across the bottom, dispersed, multiple growth, urban compact corridors. Each of them has impacts that we can measure that day and that afternoon, you get a slideshow. Uh, here's how much wetlands you impacted by each plan, farmland impacted. How much money, how many billions does it take to build the infrastructure you proposed that you need in place by twenty fifty? You know, how much land was converted to development and in our case, we'll have impacts on military training routes, uh, and therefore the utility particularly of our air stations and air force bases. We have one of those out here, right? Yeah, finest fighter wing in the world.
The greatest fighter wing on planet earth. Or we can just say on earth.
It's a, it's an all-day affair, we will, uh, we will have shuttle buses from each of the cities in the region, uh, to take people down there with a, with a mentor on the bus to explain the exercise, so you don't show up cold, you're ready to participate. General Carl Jensen's coming back to participate as one of the guest speakers. And after that, your Military Growth Task Force, we go off and do other things, but the Planet East organization turns that into the so what phase. So, now that we've dealt with Envision 2050, what can we do with where we are right now? Okay? And here's the big thing, PlanetEast.org is the website, this is open to the public, there's no cost to participate. But it is, uh, we do expect twelve hundred applications. Your county delegation will select, how was your number forty-nine? Forty-nine of those participants, it's all based on per, you know, population spread. Your forty-nine participants will be picked by Tasha and the other Planet East delegates from Wayne County, okay? But they're all there at PlanetEast.org and uh, the deadline's the end of July. You'd be notified Labor Day and sent some read-ahead materials, okay? Sorry, I think I went over five minutes.
Oh, you did?
I think.
That's, that would cost you.
I, it, it's gonna cost me anyway. Yes, sir. I do.
Remember that.
Yes, sir. Any questions I can answer? Anyone?
I think, I think we got it.
Gotta do the obligatory. In case I talk too fast, hand out.
Just in case.
Okay, thank you again, Mr. Mayor.
I knew a lot about you, Mark, I didn't know you were a senator. I didn't know that, you never told me.
When I was at Florida State, there was a lot of crime involved with the football team, if you might remember that, and they were called the criminals.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we have, uh, one of my very favorite people. A lady who liked the, um, who, who are you looking around for? Ms. Cheryl Austin. This lady is a farm lady, man, she grows veggies and she, she left a box of them in my office and I'll share with you guys, if you wanna stop by and, and get some of them. Ms. Austin, good to see you again.
Hello, everyone.
Hey there. And we are going to just, uh, turn our eyes and ears to you.
All right. I do appreciate this opportunity.
You bet.
It's been a while since I've been here with you.
It has.
But now is the time and my, do I have great news for you. The Wayne Food Initiative has been a movement to get good food, have folks have access to good food all around Goldsboro, Wayne County. We've been so successful, I tell you, I could talk an hour, but I'll only do my allotted time. We have now many community gardens about Goldsboro. One in particular is at the Public Library. And if you should look, isn't it gorgeous? I tell you, it's just fantastic, I just feel so good every time I look at that one. There is also a garden at Dillard Academy Charter School. And that's thriving as well with curriculum and gardening, children just doing fantastic things. And then, of course, the land that you appropriated to the Wayne Food Initiative in the flood zone, we have things growing there, gentlemen, we do, and lately, yes, we do. Uh, we brought some samples, uh, I hope the mayor will just take and let you have some of those. We have cherry tomatoes and kale and cucumbers and, let's see, turnips, uh, squash, zucchini and yellow squash as well. So, you will take hopefully some of those items, they are very good. And we haven't used any heavy fertilizers or pesticides or any of those kinds of things. So, it's just a different taste, if you will. I just wanna reiterate the mission for the, uh, Wayne Food Initiative. And it is a collaboration of individuals and organizations who seek to build a sound food system that increases the access of fair and affordable food for all of Goldsboro, Wayne County and surrounding areas. And our vision, a healthy, knowledgeable and engaged community that through youth engagement, collaborative community efforts and active leadership, makes nutritious and affordable food accessible to all. Protects the natural world through sound environmental practices and supports a strong and growing local farming and business economy. Doesn't it sound outstanding? In particular, when we're talking about the youth, we have a group called Swarm. And I was just so intently listening to the speaker speaking of the youth of Goldsboro. And that's part of what we about. We have some things in place that will help. And we call these folks Students Working for an Agricultural Revolutionary Movement. And what we've done, we gathered some young men from Goldsboro. Many of them have been down on their luck. Many of them, for example, are just like these young men that were spoken of previously. And there has been a tremendous turnabout in these young men. And so, we know that our program works. We just need help in getting more young men to participate. And with that, we'll just be on the move to change our community that's been spoken so poorly of, to change all the violence, to change all the bad things going on. We've been able to get some funding. We have partners, as I said before, North Carolina State University, North Carolina ENT State University, UNC Chapel Hill University. And we have local partners as well. The city of Goldsboro, you indeed. We also have the Health Department, Pots and Rec. I could just go on, as I mentioned, many partners early on in presentations. And we found that in working together, we've been able to come up with some funding, as I mentioned. And we've been able to hire some of these young men. That means they have, uh, good jobs. They can't pay a lot of money, but it's more than nothing at all. And they found that with hard work, it can make a difference, they do have something to look forward to. And I want one of those young men to just stand up, DeMarcus, are you there? This is DeMarcus Williamson. And DeMarcus has a great story to tell. Can I have Marcus just come up and just say a word?
Sure.
DeMarcus is a member of our Swarm group that I mentioned. And I'm just excited about what he can say about Swarm and what's done for him. So, you wanna talk a minute, DeMarcus?
How are y'all doing?
Good, how are you?
Yes, um, Swarm has actually been a big inspiration in my life. As, you know, going on, city of Goldsboro, a lot of teens like, likely to get to violence, gang violence, locked up, drugs. And I can honestly say I was heading in that direction. But, um, someone like Ms. Cheryl inspired me to do better with myself. It's actually hard nowadays to find a job. And as far as this, this, um, farming business going, it's actually helping me learn on traits on how to start my own business and manage it. And I like to thank the people that I work with, cause Swarm's actually kept me off the streets, kept me from doing things that I used to do, keeps me in the house, cause after work I'd be tired, so. I really, I really appreciate Ms. Cheryl and guys and women that worked with me and inspired me to do and keep me better, cause it's teens, I'm, I'm only nineteen years old. So, teens out here, like, I grew up, just my mother, father wasn't around, my father actually passed. So, for like, Ms. Cheryl to be there for me, it's like an inspiration. Keep my head right, keep me god, keep guidance for me. And I like to do good for myself and my daughter. So, I can, you know what I'm saying, show her, lead her in the right dir, in the right directions and keep her from doing the bad things I used to do. Just want better for myself. Swarm has actually kept me focused in a mind state to do better for myself.
Thank you, DeMarcus.
It's great to hear from you. And we're really proud of what you've done. And you just try and pass this on to your, your colleagues. And stay close to Ms. Austin. And you'll be okay.
Just one more thing, if you'll allow me.
Yes.
We have the mini farmers market that you've been so kind to help us with. And DeMarcus and the Swarm young men are growing produce and they have a market for it. Means they can sell it right there. And that's one avenue for them to make money and that's working for them. And we thank you indeed for setting that venue up so they could make some money. And they're gonna go even further, they have what they call the Produce Peddlers.
I was, I was wondering when you were gonna talk about this produce.
We've been just fortunate, we, we have a small grant that was able to allow us to buy some bicycles, I call them, but they are three-wheelers with, uh, buggies on the back and we tried to get one in this building.
It wouldn't fit?
That was the hardest thing. Ever, no.
It wouldn't fit?
DeMarcus, what do we do, we just, where is it?
Um, the bike, bike is actually outside of y'all.
Yeah.
We were hoping to roll it in here.
We tried, we really did, but it just wouldn't make it.
Wouldn't fit.
Well, we have four of them, uh, we have a red one, a blue one, a green one and a yellow one.
There's a picture of it here, right?
Yes, I hope each of you has one, yes. And what we plan to do with those is put the logo we have for Produce Peddlers on it, put all the safety gear on it. And then we're taking orders throughout the community, uh, for all those veggies that the Swarm group will be growing. And when they, uh, get the orders...
They'll deliver.
Then they will deliver.
Yeah. They'll deliver fresh...
Produce.
Vegetables.
That's right.
Produce to you.
Now, what's happened along with that, we have what we call the SNAP program for the mini market. Uh, the Undersecretary of Agriculture did visit Goldsboro and kicked off that process. So we will have, uh, EBT SNAP available at the mini market. And our Produce Peddlers will have access as well. So then those persons in the community who would need to use those will have access, and it won't be any difficulty for them at all. And we're just so proud, and I tell you, we're moving forward, moving forward.
Proud of you and your kids. When are you, your kids have a new song?
Yes, they do.
So when are you gonna bring them?
Well, we just have to work at that. They're out of school now.
You'll let us know when you're ready.
I'll do just that. Are there any questions, though?
Cheryl, what number do you call the order?
Oh, yes, DeMarcus?
There are two numbers on it, there.
You have to designate the right number.
Um, I really don't have a card of my own, so I can give you my actual stuff.
Do you have a number on the, on the flyer?
What number is there? One, pardon me?
Cory Montgomery.
Yes, he's our, he's our, uh, leader for the SWARM bikers, Produce Peddlers. So he can be reached. That is the correct number then, yes.
And Charles McNair?
Yes.
Either one of them?
Either one.
So these two numbers?
Those two numbers, yes.
There he is. That is... Good to see you.
Give me some good sweet potatoes.
Yes, we'll have those too. We even have some purple sweet potatoes. Have you had any?
Okay.
Purple.
Purple?
Yes. It tastes a bit different, but they're wonderful.
Never.
We'll have some of those too.
Can you make sweet potato pie out of that?
Well, I haven't tried just that yet. Oh, I don't think so. I don't know. But thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Austin, for all you're doing for us. Now, moving right along, as city manager, we are...
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We have, um, three public hearings scheduled for this evening. Jimmy Rowe will get those started for us with item E.
Ladies and City Councilmen, item E, CU ten twelve, Stephen Matthews. The property is located on the east side of North Berkeley Boulevard between Graves Drive and East Ash Street. The applicant requests a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a used car lot. The site was formally, formally approved for a used car lot. Uh, the use has been closed for more than six months. There's an existing car wash facility that occupies the site now, and they plan on continuing to use that facility as a, um, used car lot and a car wash if approved, if the car lot is approved by the city council. This is the site plan for the property in question. This is the existing block building that's located here. The car wash is actually in this building here. Uh, these are the existing parking spaces that were required for the site. The display cars for the used car lot we look at here, and this area here, and this is the, this is Berkeley Boulevard that's shown here. This is existing curricula for access to the site. Let's look at it here. The existing building on the site contains one thousand seven hundred ninety-five square feet. Um, it's a block building which extends into the required fifteen-foot yard setback. Um, this would require modification of that setback, um, by the city council. For the vehicles are proposed to be displayed on the site. Um, they have five customer parking spaces and two employee parking spaces. There's existing landscaping that's already shown on these, um, photos that I'm going to show. This is a picture of the site here. This is some of the existing landscaping. This is the existing building that's shown here. And that's some landscaping in the front and on the side here. A modification of the interconnect area requirement to the south has also been requested. The hours of operation are from nine AM to eight PM, Monday through Saturday, from nine AM to seven PM on Sunday. The vehicles for sale will be driven to the site, and reference disposal will be provided by the city. The recommendation is not actually necessary. The planning commission will have a recommendation for the council meeting on July the ninth, two thousand twelve.
Thank you. Any questions from council, of Mr. Rowe? If not, this is a public hearing requesting a change as described by Mr. Rowe. Anyone who would like to speak for or against, we'd be glad to hear from you. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Yes, ma'am. If you would come, and we'll have to swear you in, this is a conditional use issue. And anyone else who plans or would like to speak, if you will, all come up now, and our clerk can swear all of you in, and we'll hear you one at a time. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Syria Flores, and I am the current owner of the car wash on the property. And I feel that it would help my business much. And also, I feel that just how Matthew's Motors started in Goldsboro is just they in Goldsboro. Of course, he had to leave due to an econ, an economic, you know, went down, and that's understandable, but why not let him come back in? And that's all I have to say.
That is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Hey, how you doing?
Good.
My name is Tim Cullen. I've known Steve for about thirty years. And he, he's a good Christian man, a good businessman. I'm gonna read a lot of, 'cause I had to write it down this afternoon. He has a location in Clayton. He has won several awards in last year and this year. Some of the awards are the Southern Business Leader, two thousand twelve Top Entrepreneur, National Independent Automotive Dealer Association Excellent Award, two thousand eleven Better Business Bureau Award, First Runner Up. His business here in Wayne County would do nothing but help us in sales tax revenue. Our, and his, um, com- commitment to our military. He gives a lot back to the militaries, to the school. Also, I spoke with two business owners that owns property close to him, Brett King and David Perry. And both of them gave very highly recommendations, said he would love to have Mr. Matthews back in business. That's about all I have, and I'd love to see him back in business here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have at least one more? Yeah, and make sure you give us your name and mailing address.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Evening.
I didn't know I was gonna have two places on to document tonight, but I feel blessed to be here.
Thank you.
Matthew's Motors started in nineteen ninety-four in Clayton, North Carolina. I started with three cars and a boat that I bought on a credit card. Literally. I grew my business, and, uh... If I could just have five cars, and ten cars, and fifteen cars, well, I grew it to now over a hundred and thirty cars in Clayton. In nineteen ninety-eight, I had a brother who lived here, and I wanted to put him to work. So we started Matthew's Motors in Clayton. Little, uh, there was a little gas station down on Ash Street. Some of y'all might remember it. I think it's a car lot now. But, uh, Mr. Ruben Hamm called me about a year later and had this facility available. I thought it was an excellent facility, um, excellent exposure on Berkeley Boulevard. I moved over there. I was there for nine years. The economy took a turn in two thousand eight, and I had to make some hard decisions. One of those decisions was closing down Matthew's Motors here in Goldsboro and moving my operation, everything, to Clayton. I didn't want to do that because I had to lay some people off, move a lot of things around. But, um... I'm glad to say now that the economy is coming back. The used car business is booming. We sold a hundred and fifty-seven cars in Clayton last month. I believe we can come to Goldsboro and do the same thing. I have a vision for Goldsboro. I have, I see a lot of growth here. I see a lot of good things happening. And Matthew's Motors isn't just about selling cars. In two thousand ten, we were voted Quality Dealer of the Year for North and South Carolina. That's not measured by the size of the building that you have or the number of cars that you sell. That's measured by what you give back to your community, what you do in the community, what you do in your church. And to me, that's more important than any cars that you sell, okay? But that's just one, one way we can get out to the public and we can do things. When I was here before, we did a lot with the base. You heard Tim mention Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. My dad was a retired colonel. So I have a lot. I grew up on that base out there. I grew up in Goldsboro. It has a lot of fond memories here. And we have a lot of good things going on on Berkeley Boulevard and in Goldsboro. We would like to come back here and be a part of that again. And I ask you for your consideration to let Matthew's Motors come back. As you can see, uh, there was one other person that was coming back to, uh, to lease that at one time, so we went ahead and we put the, uh, the sidewalks in, and we did the landscaping. We did what we needed to do to get that business up and rolling, but the financial times hit him, and he was unable to do that. We have a car wash there now, located on the right side in our service bay there. The business is struggling right now. It's struggling, as most small businesses do when they get started. But with the addition of Matthew's Motors and the amount of cars that I'll be selling, I'll be able to funnel those cars through them and help them out. So I just ask for your consideration for this tonight, fellas. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I know three were sworn, but if there's anyone changed their mind and would like to speak, our city clerk would mind administering a oath to you, uh, swearing you in. Anyone? If not, we will close this public hearing, and we'll move to our next.
Item F, Z seven twelve, Matthews and Bridges Property. The property has a fringe of approximately three hundred feet on North Berkeley Boulevard, a fringe of appro, approximately one eighty-five feet on Ridge Crest Drive, a fringe of one hundred feet on Summit Drive, and a total area of approximately seven thousand five thousand five hundred square feet, or one point seven three acres. The present zoning classification is often institutional and R sixteen residential. The proposed zoning classification is neighborhood business conditional district to allow combination of retail, shopping, and a sit-down restaurant. This is the subject property that's shown here in the crosshatch area. This is Berkeley Boulevard that's located here, Ridge Crest Drive, and this is Summit Road that's shown here. The property in the blue is often institutional. This property is often institutional conditional district. The property in the red is general business, highway business, shopping center. And this property here is R sixteen residential in here. The comprehensive land use plan designates the crosshatch property here as existing residential. The property shown here in the yellow color is for existing residential. The property shown here in the red major retail, and the property here shown, property shown here for commercial development. This is the proposed site plan. On April sixteenth, two thousand twelve, the council denied this request. The applicant, however, has now included an additional lot, and the council waived the six-month waiting period as they found that the additional lot substantially changed the circumstances bearing on the application. The subject property is located here. This is Berkeley, Ridge Crest. Summit here. This is the proposed building that they are requesting here that would either house the restaurant or the, uh, retail area, or the restaurant and retail. This is the proposed parking lot that's located here. And there's a drive that's shown here on Ridge Crest Drive. There's a drive here that's shown on Berkeley Boulevard. And there's another drive here that'll be shown on Ridge Crest Drive. Um, there's also shown parking, uh, as you command on Berkeley, and if you're going out on Summit Drive, there will be some parking located in this area here. When last considered, the council expressed concern about ingress and egress to the site. NCDOT has agreed to allow the placement of a right-in, right-out curlicut on Berkeley Boulevard, which will be further examined at the time of the site plan approval. The conceptual plan submitted by the applicant now indicates driveway access from Ridge Crest Drive as well as Summit Drive in addition to a right-in, right-out curlicut along Berkeley Boulevard. A nine thousand, ten thousand square foot retail building, and a total of forty parking spaces are shown on this plan. A valid protest petition has been submitted, which will require the six of the seven councilmen vote affirmatively in order to approve the zoning request. Scenario one indicates up to a ten thousand square foot traditional retail building with retail uses typically found in neighborhood and community shopping centers. Scenario two indicates up to four thousand five hundred square foot, um, traditional retail, in or ice cream, frozen yolks, and up to four thousand five hundred square foot of space for a fast, casual, full-service sit-down restaurant serving alcoholic beverages. This is what they call a fast, casual restaurant. This is a new idea that's going around in a lot of communities now. And this is the, a photograph of the property in question. And this is the existing structure that's located on the property on Ridge Crest Drive.
Summit, Jim.
On Summit Road, excuse me. And there is a valid protest petition, which eighty-four point nine four percent of the, um, owners on the front sign. The recommendation is not actually necessary. The planning commission will have a recommendation for the council on July the ninth, two thousand twelve.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Rowe from council? Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing, as Mr. Rowe just described. Anyone who would like to speak for or against? We'd be glad to hear from you. Any speakers? When you come, would you, uh, just give us your name and mailing address? And, uh, city clerk, we need to make sure that she has the correct information.
You are Sanders? V E U L A H. Sanders, twenty-seven oh six Langston Drive.
Yes, ma'am. You may, you may proceed.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mayor and City Council, my business with you all tonight is to tell you that I've lived in Ridge Crest subdivision for a period of forty-four years. I've seen people come. I've seen people go. We got a nice neighborhood there. But my view of what's happening to our little subdivision, that it's gonna go commercial. Too much commercial on Berkeley Boulevard. The restaurant that is pos, proposing to go out there, I think my viewpoint is gonna be right-in, right-out off of Berkeley. And Summit is possibly gonna be left-out, right-out. And those people who want to go maybe to Kmart, they're not going all the way out past the church and go up to the Cadillac Place and come back down, hit Berkeley and go back around. They're gonna come down Summit, hit Ridge Crest subdivision, go around Forest Road, and come out down my street and hit the lot. Now, we have been bombarded with Kirkwood. I, I, I love Kirkwood. Kirkwood is a, uh, retirement village. Pro, probably got maybe eighty to a hundred family, maybe one person, two people. Probably nine out of ten cars that come down Langston Drive. I had to be so careful when I back out, when my husband backs out, to make sure we don't get run over. Now, this is people from... Now, this is people from Kirkwood. Now, what's going to happen when these people leave the restaurant? And they make a right turn and go down Ridgecrest and come down Langston to get to that light? Because, see, DOT's not going to put another light up there. Because he's got one at Berkeley. I even have a hard time coming out of Langston Drive because somebody's trying to come out of the mall that those lanes are not, don't have an arrow. If you're going to turn right or left, leave them the mall. So we sit there and say, what are you going to do? What are you going to do? So we wait just about two seconds, and then we make a move. So it's a problem. Langston Drive is a problem. So I'm not for it. I oppose it very much so.
My name is Jim Sanders. As you can tell, I'm second in command in our house.
Let me get, let me get, I bet you oppose it.
You what?
See.
Well, I'm not here primarily to speak, uh, represent, uh, some of our elderly citizens in Ridgecrest. They are, some of them, because of their age, cannot be here tonight. So, uh, if you all are familiar with that area, you would know that all of us are elderly. Those citizens already know that we have residents over on Ridgecrest already because of the traffic out on Berkeley. They are already doing their horseshoe around so they can get to the signal light to go across. That's how busy that is right now because our ci- our citizens are using that. And, uh, the, uh, if this restaurant were to, uh, be up there, then that would cause even more traffic to be going around horseshoe. And that would cause more concern because our elderly citizens there. And right now, our street is in dire need of being repaid because of the exit. And so for that reason, I am representing some of the citizens also of public this idea.
Ms. Sanders, as a minister, I just want to commend you for speaking truth to us all tonight about the part about being second in command.
Well, be y'all.
You're humbly welcome.
I won't get into that. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Evening.
I am Janet Wallston, and I am the owner of the property at twenty-seven oh three Ridgecrest Drive, which is directly behind the property on Berkeley that we're talking about. Now, I was here on March the eighteenth to speak to you, and as I stated at that time, Ridgecrest is a stable neighborhood that was developed in the late nineteen fifties. And many of the present-day residents are the original homeowners there. Now, I have valid concerns regarding the impact that this proposed rezoning will have on our neighborhood, and especially on me. As two hundred feet of this property adjoins my property on one side, and a hundred feet adjoins me at the rear. Now, having a sit-down restaurant with heavy traffic at all hours of the day and night within a few feet of your bedroom window is certainly not conclude, conduct, conducive to the atmosphere that I have come to know. I condemn that Ridgecrest Drive and Summit Drive are not equipped to handle this extra traffic that will be generated by this proposed development. One, traffic will still be unable to make a left turn, left-hand turn on the Berkeley Boulevard. And anyone wanting to do will still be forced to drive through the neighborhood, as these people have just, have just stated, to the traffic light on Langston Drive. Two, even with the newly proposed exit on Summit Drive, I don't believe anyone wanting to go toward Ash Street and Goldsboro is going to drive the nearly three-quarters of a mile down Summit Drive, over to Oak Forest to hit the traffic light at Highway Seventy bypass. It is simply not going to happen. Three, adding to the problem of the traffic coming from this new restaurant, we have the two that have just been opened across the street, compounding all this other traffic on Berkeley Boulevard. I and the two other property owners directly adjoining this property ask that you deny this request and keep the present zoning classification office and institutional. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hello, gentlemen. Um, I'm Steve Matthews. I'm the owner of that property. I purchased that property, uh, I guess it was about two thousand and four, with hopes of building a, a bigger dealership there, similar to the one that I have in Clayton. That was denied by the council at that time. I've held on to the property, hoping that someone would come along. I paid property tax, uh, payments ever since oh four for eight years. And now we have a business that's willing to come to town that already has several pieces of property here. Matter of fact, they have over twenty million dollars invested in your town right now. Guys, we don't want to set the precedent of running people away from here that want to see growth. And that's what I think we all want to see. We want to see controlled growth, though. I respect how they feel about their property. But, you know, as we grow and our tax base increases, that's going to do nothing but help our town to grow. And we can't stop progress. And that's what this is all about, is progress. There were some people that were all for this when they thought their property was going to be purchased, and all of a sudden their tide has changed since their property wasn't going to be purchased. All I ask you is to consider this. I think it's a very good move, bringing a, a, a business here who happens to have a business going up across the street and several other venues going on in this town. And we want to send a signal out that we do want to grow here in Goldsboro. We want to have controlled growth. And there's other neighborhoods and other businesses that, that pour out into neighborhoods. I understand that. I have one myself in Clayton, you know, where a, a food line opened up right across the street from where we live. But that's progress, gentlemen. That's progress. And as long as we move forward and have progress, these things are going to happen. But it's good progress. It's going to build our, our coffers here in the town. It's going to build us up as, as a place to come, for businesses to come to, and I think that's what we want. We don't want to run businesses away. We want business to come here to, uh, Goldsboro. And I ask that you give these gentlemen a chance. All they want to do is improve what we already have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
My name is Dewey Page. I'm retired military. I came here and I bought a home on Langston Drive in a, in a subdivision. Not, not a, not a busy Berkeley Boulevard area, but a subdivision. And, uh, I bought it in seventy-two. And it was a nice quiet, nice quiet area. My, my wife and I have been living there ever since. It was quiet. But, uh, Berkeley Boulevard moved in. They had a meeting, and, uh, they says, uh, well, we're going to put the entrance and exit in on the other side, on the other street, on the other side. So no problem. So, uh, sometime later, they had the, uh, trailer and the, the workman was, was building a road in, in front, almost in front of my house, down in front of my house into, into Berkeley Boulevard. I went out to the trailer, to the, uh, people, and I asked them, I says, what's happening? Why, why are you building this road? He says, it's a work road or what? And he says, no. He says, we changed our mind. Says, uh, we didn't want to put it in on that side. So we're going to put the entrance in on this side. So, uh, as, as everyone else has said, it was a nice, quiet living area until then. And now I think, uh, Berkeley has a hundred and forty, hundred and forty apartments out there. And you talking about busy, it's almost as busy, busy as Berkeley Boulevard in front of my house. And when, when you back out, you better back, you better, be, be careful, of course. You better back out easy and, and have, have a good view. Another thing, the road from the, from the corner down to the road up to Berkeley Boulevard is pretty, is pretty good distance. But people will come from, I cross, I guess I cross over the Chevrolet place, across Summit Drive, or wherever, come back around to the stoplight. And when they come in front of my house, some of them, I, I, I know, I know I've seen them doing at least fifty, some of them. And I, I think a, a stop, a, a, a speed sign, a speed bump, that would be a good thing there, too. Because, but, uh, I mean, that's, that's, that's another thing, though. But, uh, but, but the road itself, it was a nice, firm road when I moved in there, and now it's just got little cracks, little cracks all up and down it, from one end to the other. And it's, and it's sort of wavy. And, uh, of course, I, I guess from the, all the use and all those big trucks coming in and, uh, uh, coming into, to, uh, Kirkwood have, have sort of messed the road up a little bit. But, uh, I, I, I'll be honest with you, it's, it's a, somebody asked me, says, well, you live out there in a nice, quiet area, you know? He says, you really, really got a nice place. But to me, it's the noisiest place I've ever lived. Trucks coming in and out with these loud exhaust pipes and mufflers. And, uh, of course, I, I'm not saying this, I don't dislike people in Kirkwood. In fact, I, I'd do anything I could to help them. But they're always having fires. The fire truck, you can hear it coming down the road from Pinewood until it turns in the road, and, and they'll have the siren on until just before they turn into Kirkwood. And also, uh, I mean, you have to, you have to hear that, too. And it's, it's, it's not, uh, it's not what you, what you would want to buy to live in the rest of your life if you had a choice or if you knew what you were buying. And so, uh, this is just some of the things that, uh, that I, I just wanted to mention about it. But I think, too, that we need a speed bump out there because people fly through there. From, from down, down the corner of the road up into the Berkeley Boulevard, they'll be coming around there and they'll, they'll pick up their speed and, and, uh, I, I would, I would like for a, a, a patrolman or policeman to sit out there somewhere where they couldn't see them, just see sometime how, how fast some of them are going. Because I don't think I'm exaggerating when I say fifty miles an hour. But, uh, anyway, uh, I guess I've, I've complained enough, but, uh, but, uh, sometimes you have to live with what you, what you, what you got. But, uh, I just, uh, I'd, I'd rather not have more traffic on, in that area if, if possible. Because when I moved in that area out there, uh, Sears was a farmland. And of course, you, you can, you can, you can imagine what's happening all this time. You know, you, you've just seen it change from a hundred percent, you know, all, all this. And had, had, the road was a snow hill highway, one lane going and one lane coming. And thi- this is what I've had to live with and compare with ever since I've been there. And if I had a choice, I wouldn't want any more restaurants or, or, or food chains or nothing coming in. The Comco Car Wash out there, it came in there, and it, it's, it's a car wash. And it, uh, it stayed for, I don't know, quite a few years. So finally, they had to leave. They had to close up and leave. And so what happened is I got a letter from the, the health department in Goldsboro that they had to leave because they were leaking oil and gas into, in, in the, uh, in the ground. And this ground, as you know what kind of ground it is, it's pretty soft soil, and the oil and stuff will get in, and it'll seep through. Uh, of course, I'm one of the few that have a well. I have a well in my front yard because I've never had no problems with it. And, uh, they, they told me, said if I'm having trouble with my well, that, uh, that, uh, let them know that they were there. I'm, I'm still thinking about having it checked out. And of course, since then, I, I've got COPD, Crohn's colitis, and osteoporosis. And I don't know if either one of those is attributed to the, leaking of that fuel and oil or not, but I'm going to check it out and try to find out something about adventure. But anyway, my answer is no. No more traffic, no more buildings. Give us peace and quiet if possible. And that's it. Is anything else, is, have I shut my mouth off enough?
If you're finished, we, we hear you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hi, dear mayor.
How are you?
I'll be the one that'll take, take three minutes. Me and my wife owns two pieces of property. One we're living in is on the corner of Ridgecrest Drive that connects with Summit. I bought her a piece of property on Summit. And now that's going to be an access road property for this restaurant, right in front of it. We're not happy with it. One of my good friends, he's still a good friend of me, he's probably not happy with me being up here either. But we need another restaurant? I don't think so. I'm a living the image of that. And I ask you for your vote of no. Mine is no. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is William Roger Bedford. I live at twenty-eight oh one Ridgecrest, and it's on the corner of Ridgecrest and Summit. I was only up here two months ago at this very same council, addressing the same concerns that I have today. We did two protest petitions this time that affected seven of the eight property owners involved with the property that's within one hundred feet of the proposed changes. The one that we did not get to sign was a business, and I understand their, their lack of willingness to sign. But the property owners that I spoke with, they were very concerned that the traffic would be considerably worse. Uh, we are an aged neighborhood. We have become in recent years a more diverse neighborhood. Uh, but we have some families that are, have young children out there. I have grandchildren that, that come to my house, and, and I want them to be able to play, and I don't want to have to constantly worry about traffic everywhere. Ridgecrest Drive was a, a road that was designed in the fifties. It's a very narrow road. You could take full, two full-size vehicles today, and you would have an issue with, with them meeting each other. To me, it was an end-around for them to try to say they would have an access onto Summit Road. Because Summit Road, when you come out of there, you're going to turn on Ridgecrest. Whether you go around and hit Langston halfway around the horseshoe and come out at the traffic light, or whether you come back out of Ridgecrest and try to turn left on Berkeley, which is a mistake because that traffic is just too bad. It's a state-maintained road. I understand that. And I also wanted to say that the, the right-in, right-out that was being proposed to help the flow of traffic, if you come from the south, you're going to head back to the south when you leave, which means you're going to have to come out Summit, then you're going to go back to Ridgecrest, one way or the other. And either the people on Langston Drive are correct, you're going to come out their way, or we're correct, and you're going to come out on Ridgecrest. One of the two is the only real ways out. Unless you go all the way around, three-quarters of a mile, and end up out by the Chevrolet dealership. And I don't see that as something that's most likely to happen. There's also, right now on Summit Road, there is apartment complexes. There's also, right now on Summit Road, there is, uh, apartment complexes, there's a daycare, there's a large church, and there's a fourplex apartments. I mean, I think that road is pretty well-traveled. It is, it is extremely traveled on Sunday, and I, like my neighbor just spoke, I've noticed people are speeding, speeding is kind of a major issue out there. I don't know what to do about it, but I can tell you this, more traffic is not going to help the problem. And I, 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 I'm not against progress, and I'm not against people being able to do what they want to with their own property, but it's not our fault that somebody bought a pig and a poke and chose to get it rezoned after they bought it. And I would just like that be considered, that we are, we are a small neighborhood, but we are united in that we do not want this kind of change that affects our neighborhood. I know you guys are looking at tax value, I know you're looking at revenue, I understand that, and I appreciate that. I pay city taxes, and I'm not complaining that paying city taxes. I am also a city resident for a long time. I was, I moved in my house in nineteen fifty-nine, I was eight years old. So I was there for a while, then I went in the military, I retired from that, and I moved right back to the same house. So I have a longstanding in this area, a longstanding, born and raised in Goldsboro and plan on retiring and dying. That's my, that's, that's what I plan on doing. So I would appreciate your consideration to not allow them to rezone this as they're proposing and, and leave it as office and institutional, and I think we could deal with that.
Thank you.
And plus, it's pretty good neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any, any more speakers? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Rain Casey, and I'm not a resident of Ridgecrest, I don't live in that area, so, but I assume you will let me speak. I have lived in Goldsboro over forty years, and, and like they say, Berkeley Boulevard has evolved from a two-lane street to a four-lane street and increasing. My concern is three concerns, that one, you're taking a nice sweet neighborhood and turning it into an undesirable location where people are not going to want to live anymore. The second one is, my concern is the traffic on Berkeley Boulevard. I don't know what they mean by right in and right out, but I'm, what I assume is that you go in coming right and you go out going right. How do you control that? How do you keep people coming south on Berkeley Boulevard from turning into that, that restaurant? How do you keep people from speeding down Berkeley Boulevard and slamming their brakes on right before they get to the restaurant and going in? Traffic's already bad on, if you, if you're ever out there on Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, Fridays, uh, they're backed up almost to the stoplight anyway. But I think, uh, for the people on Ridgecrest, that you really should leave that as a, not zone it as commercial, leave it the way it's zoned right now, so that somebody can go in there and buy that property, which is what Mr. Matthews wants, and, uh, and he can probably make a profit from it, it'll make everybody happy if you'll just let them do their thing. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more speakers?
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Fay Quinn, I live in one oh nine Brisbane Circle in the La Grange. I own property, um, on Ridgecrest. I'm not directly, um, beside the property in question for this restaurant. I'm actually, my house is six houses down. I'm opposed to the restaurant coming in because of the traffic. It's always been bad, it was bad when my children were growing up, I lived out there for forty years. I do not live there now, but I have people from the base that live there, and sometimes they have small children, and the traffic is a problem. I'm not opposed to new business coming into town. I think it's, it's wonderful that we can get new business and create new jobs, because we need it, but I think there are better locations than Ridgecrest. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any one else who would like?
Can I have one thing?
One shot, have one shot, ma'am.
Oh, only one shot, I thought I was trying to half.
Pardon?
Not a shot to half.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all right. All I wanted to say was it's already thirty-five restaurants between Ash Street and the brothers.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council members. I think we had a meeting last April, was about the, uh, traffic situation. Well, I think I solved that. Coming off of Berkeley, onto Ridgecrest, you can take a left, if this property is approved, take a left, go into the parking area, come back out onto Ridgecrest. Now, I understand that DOT approved a break-in getting back onto Berkeley. That's two egresses, two ingresses. But I'm strictly against the additional one that's going to be going to Summit Drive. I, I certainly don't want that to happen, and I take, hope you take that into consideration. Traffic-wise, we have enough of it. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, council. Uh, my name is Justin Shadameth Face and NSO Shits, and I'm here on behalf of Capital Funds Inc., who's the proposed developer of this, um, subject property. Capital Funds has a substantial investment in this retail corridor, uh, they own the mall and have been instrumental in recruiting additional, uh, retail into this corridor. I guess the main objective with this is to continue that, uh, in- investment and to help upgrade the, the corridor through kind of creating a gateway, if you will. We feel like this parcel and this development would complement the, uh, US Cellular Olive Garden Development across the street. And as you enter what we like to call the Miracle Mile of, uh, Berkeley Boulevard, where the majority of the retail, and we want to keep the retail on Berkeley Boulevard, um, as you enter that Miracle Mile off of Highway Seventy, I think it kind of paints, um, a nice landscape and a nice picture of, of hopefully what will be an improving corridor, and this is just the beginning of, of, of future improvements within that corridor. And I know a lot of the residents, um, have taken a lot of time and, uh, you know, have expressed their concerns over, uh, you know, additional growth within this corridor. I think that it's important to note that, um, if they're concerned about the, the quality of life or their housing values, a lot of, um, uh, neighborhoods that are next to vacant malls or, or malls that are deteriorating, and retail corridors that are deteriorating instead of improving, um, a lot of those neighborhoods, um, start transitioning the other way. So it's, I think it's important to, uh, you know, continue a, a, a track on the right path, um, instead of, um, you know, maybe, uh, develop farmland and kind of see this, uh, mature retail, uh, existing corridor kind of go along the wayside. And I think it's also important, and I think a lot of progressive city councils realize that you need to take advantage of the existing infrastructure and, and modify and improve and, and expand as opposed to, you know, going elsewhere and, and starting from scratch on, on those, um, type of efforts. After looking at Mark Sutherland's presentation, uh, it looks like we should probably be building a lot more space than, um, what's proposed, but, um, we've, we've made some modifications since the, um, initial presentation, including we've expanded the size of the parcel. Typical retail developments are about ten thousand square feet of retail per acre. This is one point seven acres, and, um, it, it's likely it'll, it'll be less than, um, ten thousand square feet, um, but the parcel is, is oversized. It's important to note that Summit Drive and the, and-